All right, it is 9:00 AM. We will call the county's order. If you all please rise and raise your flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Most gracious, heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day and your blessings are many. Father, let us thank you, yes. You allow us to come together heavenly Father and discuss the county's business heavenly Father. And Father, let us go with us as we go into this meeting heavenly Father, that we go into it with open minds and then we can do what's best for the county. And Father, let us go with us, lead, I'm directed, and say to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, as everyone has a chance to read the minutes from last month's meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right, with that, I'll entertain a motion. We will repeat since I wasn't at the meeting. Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to...
Please.
Motion on the floor from Geraldine, a second from Preston. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right, we do have a list of additional appropriations as you received in your email prior to the meeting. Michelle, do you need these individually or do you need... Okay. All right, so there's an additional appropriation for the ARP money, which was from the vote last meeting to give the commissioners the control of the ARP money. We have to do that annually. There was also additional appropriation because building and structure insurance came in higher than expected. There is a cemetery commission. A commissioner raised a contract amount of $1,500 due to additional cemeteries. There's also a tobacco settlement grant and one for the town of Hartsville. Okay. Michelle, what do you need in a motion? Do you need a specific dollar amount of commission? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the additional appropriations.
I've got a quick question.
Sure.
The...how much...with the insurance, I didn't see how much that was difference. The building structure insurance came in higher than expected. What was that amount? Do you have that, Todd?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Do you not request any $50,000?
That's a little extra just against with the rest of the year. We have the pre-vehicle insurance also put up there. So we've got to...
Or seven dollars? Hmm.
I might say, my mate, we are planning on bill bidding out the insurance here. That's our plans anyway. So this is something that...just to keep everybody honest, it's something we're looking into right now. I don't think we've done that for several years.
That was my question, how long has it been since we've asked for it?
It's been six years.
Yeah, that's too far. That's way too long. That's probably something that ought to be done, in my opinion. But they're a couple of years.
I have another question. Yes, I thought we had increased the budget on the cemetery fund already when we did the budget hearing.
I don't think there was any.
I know we negotiated the contract to be higher to pay the person that funded. Is this for something other than the mowing?
Oh, no, this is for mowing.
So we still need to take it up more?
That was two years ago. That was two years ago. So wouldn't it be increased last year? But then this year, we picked up some additional cemeteries.
It looks like there are six additional cemeteries.
Mm-hmm. So I'll comment on this. So I won't vote on it. I can't because my son-in-law is who is mowing. But I think the increase is probably due to the fact that a lot of the cemeteries weren't being built. And he's been on top of it. And he's found a lot of messes.
Well, I knew we had increased it. I just couldn't remember for the life of me which year we did it. And that confused me when I saw the picture because I thought, well, that's the number. I thought we had increased it. But I couldn't remember what year it was, so...
It was a year ago.
Okay. Okay.
He's done an excellent job.
We did it differently before, right? It was a different contract per cemetery. And now it's one lump contract.
Well, they would change contractors.
Oh, okay.
So he's always been among someone, hasn't he?
Okay.
But he's done an excellent job. And there were some cemeteries that weren't being taken care of. They've formally been taken care of that he never got picked up, so...
Okay, what other questions about the additional appropriations? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additional appropriations. Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Ron Dell. Do I have a second? Second from Bubba. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
I abstain.
Motion carries with Joe abstaining.
You abstain with respect to the cemetery?
Yes.
Yes, yes. But not towards... Right, right.
All right. Okay, Kyra, do you have any updates?
No.
Hey, John?
Hello, good.
Okay, Todd?
No, ma'am.
All right. Tammy, I see you're in the audience. Do you have any updates from Economic Growth Partnership?
No. Possibly next meeting, not this one.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll go around the table. Preston? Karen? Okay, Bubba? Gerald?
Maybe Todd can give us a little more information on the idea of rebuilding the county building.
Well, there's somewhat of a learning curve. I think Kyra sent you all a copy of a BOT proposal, which is the first step in trying to get the ball rolling here. And we need to pass...commissioners, first of all, need to pass ordinance. The state says, in order for us to pursue this, whether we do or not, we have to have an ordinance in place that states that gives us the option to do that if we choose. And that being said, there's really nothing going on other than that. I'm going to let Keely. She is very well versed in this because she deals with this pretty much on a daily basis and is much, much more familiar with it than I am. I'm still learning about it. I really didn't even know such a thing existed until here a few months ago. But it's a law several years ago that the state passed that allows counties and municipalities to...in order... It's a more convenient way to fund projects. Gives you a little more flexibility. Gives you really a little more control and say in how you want things to... In other words, in a nutshell, in the old days, you know, you need X amount of dollars to do a project. You hire an engineer that you pay an exorbitant amount of money to and you rely on him based on trust to come up with a plan that you like. Whereas in this case, it's more...we're more of a hands-on. We're more involved. The county government's a little bit more involved on the dirty details of how we want this to look. Keely, you want to touch on that?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit more about what a build-operate transfer is. So it's a way that you can do a public-private partnership. So as the commissioners have talked about the issues with the highway department facility, they've expressed interest in pursuing a build-operate transfer. It's also known as a BOT. There are several different ways you can go about it. But it is an opportunity for you to have more say over the development and can also adjust the financing. So typically, like Todd said, you have to come up with the money. So maybe you would look for a bond as a unit of local government and you would be funding the project that way. Typically, with a build-operate transfer, the development team that comes to you offers the financing. So they can offer it for a short period of time and you pay a lease payment or they can offer it for a longer period of time. So there are a couple of different ways that this can work. So if a community decides to do a BOT, if they are even interested in it, they have to pass an ordinance. And passing the ordinance just says that municipality can do a build-operate transfer. Doesn't commit you to doing one. It doesn't commit you to a specific project. It's just something that you have to have on file locally that's been adopted before you can move forward. With a BOT, there are a couple of different ways you can do it. So you can, as a county or as a city, you can decide, okay, I want to have my preferred engineer and I'm going to say, this is the design team, the engineer, architect, mechanical, electrical, plumbing team. This is who I want. And then you can submit an RFP and say, I want the contractor, developer, financer to come together as a team and they're going to have to work with my preferred design team. That's one way of doing it. Or you can, as you write in the RFP, say, you know what, I want you as a development team to bring the money, the contractor, the design team, everybody together. And then you come up with your own team and we'll work with you because you already know how to work together. So there's a couple of different ways to do that. So in this case, I don't know that we have a preferred architect or engineer and it might make more sense if we were going to move forward with that that we have a development team pick that up. But that's something that each community can decide. The community is able to write the RFP. So things that are important to you in a project, if you move forward with a BOT. For example, if you want them to be in Southern Indiana, you can put that in your RFP. If you want them to have previous experience working with the county, you can put that in your RFP. So that your development team really is somebody that is going to meet your needs or the specific ones that you have. The process of a BOT, which I think is important for all of us to know, and communities don't always realize this, it is really sold as there's no risk during the scoping period. And the scoping period is this first part of the agreement that you enter into. So if we were to move forward with a BOT, we would have that ordinance approved by the commissioners. So that would be the first step. The next step would be to create an RFP for a project. So if it was a highway department or another one, we would create all those parameters and asking for development teams to respond.
Excuse me a second.
Yes.
Some of these acronyms you're using that you're familiar with were not prominent. RFP, requests or proposals. Very important.
So is that a bid?
It's basically like a document, a public document that you put out and you say, here are the parameters of what we want you to respond to. So that's what a development team would be responding to. So it would have all of the parameters of a project, the identified scope, what you would want, who you're looking for. That would be in the request for proposal. I have a question.
It's similar...it's similar to advertising for a bid. But what you're doing is you send out a request for businesses and to these engineering firms to make you a proposal to perform and develop certain designs, certain plans, certain infrastructure. You say, this is what I need and I want a proposal through open bidding to do this.
Karen?
On the paper that Kyra sent us, it says RFP/Q. What's the Q mean within that?
So a request for proposal or a request for qualifications.
Okay.
So at this...any other questions to that point?
These... I've got a lot of questions. These request or proposal, these something that the counties under obligation to pay for?
Yeah, so it's really just sending out, hey, we're interested in this project or we want somebody to respond to us with their best. So it's a document where we would have fees incurred by putting together an RFP through using outside counsel. So we would want to have an attorney look at that if we were to move forward with that. So that would be the only fee that I would expect the county to have in releasing and any sort of advertising in the newspaper.
I've done these multiple times, RFPs with the insurgency districts, where...
Am I talking to the mic?
Where a plan of work is developed, say by NRCS, a plan of work to do certain things. And then a request is sent out to engineering firms based on that plan of work to make a proposal on how that is...how that would be accomplished. And then typically, within that proposal, they'll give you a price or a range of prices to do certain parts of that or the whole thing.
So our initial upfront cost would be for the attorney to draft all of that stuff. What are the estimated costs of that?
Depends on time and how complicated you want it to be.
Typically, when a community goes through a BOT and they go through that process, they hire outside counsel that a firm does on a regular basis, which can be a little more expensive. So basically, the process would be the adoption of the BOT, the ordinance that we were talking about. Then if the county, if the community was interested, they'd move forward with submitting an RFP. And then you would get those responses back from a development team. And once you decide, okay, we like this. We like the responses. So you choose. You have a selection committee. And say you chose a development team. After that, there's a period called a scoping period. And it's this period of time that often in the industry is sold as no risk to the community and you don't have to pay for it. And that is not true. So I just want to be clear that if our community were to enter into a BOT during a scoping period, we want to still be very intentional with our time. And here's what I mean. This is a period of time where all the design is taking place. So for example, you know, say it would be the highway department project. It would be designing a building, designing parking, or all of these things. We would want that period of time to only be design decision related. And I say that because if, for example, if a community goes forward with a BOT and they do not have the local buy-in of both the commissioners and the council, that development team who charges you by the hour, if they have to come in and present to a council every time to try to generate everybody's support or meet with each person individually just to get support in the project, that's money that the county is still being bid or billed. During this period of time called a scoping period, you won't get a bill during it unless you decide to not move forward with the project. So the community will not get billed for the scoping period until the very end of the project because it'll be wrapped into the total project cost unless the community decides to not move forward. At that time, typically, you can...the community can be billed for the scoping period. So it's not without risk. For example, if we don't know that we want to do a project, whatever project is identified, I would advise not moving forward until we have consensus. And I say that because I can...you can see it in the industry where communities waste time and money. And we would want, I would think, save as much money as possible. So during a scoping period, my professional recommendation is that it is only design-driven and it's only decisions made for the project as opposed to trying to get everybody to support the project. And at the end of the scoping period, you do get a guaranteed maximum price. So you would have the development team telling you that this would be the max, you know, number for the investment. And then the fiscal body would have to agree to paying that. You know, would have to find a source of revenue. And that's when the financer of the development team can go out and get the funding for the project. So it's complicated. It's very complicated. But I do think from my industry experience, I can kind of give some advice to us locally of how we can save money if it's something that the community was interested in.
So...
It helps.
So my head still doesn't. I still don't understand.
Sure.
I don't understand it. It's awfully complicated, right?
It is.
And this comes down to basically a rent-to-own type situation at the end.
It does allow you to do that. Now, sometimes, like, a developer will provide what's called bridge financing. So like, they'll just finance it during the period of construction and then the municipality will buy it off of them right afterwards. Or there are some developers who will do a lease agreement over a long period of time, like 20 or 30 years. It's a little less likely, but they do do that sometimes. But yes, it's kind of like rent-to-own. Like, basically, a development team has that sort of financing risk. But I think everyone should also be aware, if that risk is being diverted to a development team, they're also going to be capitalizing on that risk, right? Like, they're going to...they make money off of holding that risk. If that makes sense. There's going to be a financing charge, basically what I'm saying. There's a project cost and there will be a financing cost.
So I'm kind of in the same boat. I need to understand this a little better, too. So if you've got...let's say we have a piece of land that the county is wanting to move the garage to or whatever. If you take the option of, hey, let's go to a bank or get a bond and just buy that piece of property and pay back the bond on that property, does that mean the BOT wouldn't work to build whatever you wanted to put on the property? You have to do this rent-to-own in order to do a BOT? I guess that's my confusion.
Probably more of a legal question. But from my initial understanding of working through BOTs, you could have the land yourself. Like, the county could have land that they identify that they purchase and that development team would have to respond to that site, right? They would be designing something for that site particularly. Alternatively, if you don't have a piece of land but you know that in your project you want to have a new location, you could put that in the RFP. Like, we want the development team to come to the county with a piece of land as part of their response. That's also an option.
So if you don't already have land and you own it, you still qualify for a BOT? Or can you do it on, like, the existing parcel? I'm just going to go out of the hypothetical. So I'm kind of understanding this. But so if they wanted to just rebuild where they're currently at and upgrade everything, you could still use the BOT for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you can use it. And I don't recommend this, but some communities do go through... Say they have two sites. Like, let's...so during the scoping period, they decide... They have the development team give them recommendations on building a new location, like, building a site at a new location or redevelopment, you know, remodeling or redoing the building on the existing site. You can under-scoping commit. You can have that during the scoping period where that development team is giving you recommendations. I don't recommend that because I would rather the community make that... You know, the elected leadership make that decision ahead of time than to spend time and money having people tell us whether or not it's a good idea. So it's just more expensive. So I would recommend the least costly way of doing it, which is identifying what you think the need is ahead of time instead of having the development team give you recommendations.
Is there a draft ordinance circulating somewhere?
There is a draft ordinance. I believe every council member has a copy of that for the BOT ordinance for the commissioners.
Did that get distributed yet?
Thank you for finding your email, John. I think your inbox...
Okay. Got some title there.
Who sent it?
Kyra.
I sent it to you.
Oh, I have it on here that council... I have it on here that council sent it. What's that, that council?
Yeah, I haven't received it. I haven't received it.
It was...yeah, Kyra, you sent it out on February 10th.
Is that this one here? Yeah, I've got it here. It's a...
Or maybe it's an overview.
Yeah, I think it's an overview.
It's not the ordinance. I guess it's an overview. Yeah.
Yeah, I got the one.
Yeah, I was going to say, I have it on.
Yeah, I have it. You sent it.
Okay. Okay, no, you don't have the proposed ordinance. Okay, any other questions? This is something I think if a county would be interested in moving forward with something like that, I think it's worth that. We could have an expert come in here and talk about it, answer any questions. We could have an attorney or a legal person come in here and answer any questions that we might have before moving forward. It's not anything that I would recommend moving forward without fully understanding the process and what potential financial implications could take place.
We may be a better educator session.
Yeah, okay. I also am happy to connect you with some of the communities I've worked with on a BOT as well. They give you their...to share their insight.
Can you email those people's names to us?
Mm-hmm.
I would like to have that, just so I kind of understand it more.
Yeah, I believe that town of Parksville is actually using a BOT for a road project right now as part of their ready projects. So that's one also going in. I haven't worked with them directly, but that's one that they're doing.
A new road?
Mm-hmm.
Or just a fix?
Um, well, I'm not for sure on the whole project. I think it's a South Parksville development. I don't know if it's a new road or an old road. But so it doesn't have to just be buildings. You know, it can be other ways of financing projects. All right, with that, so clearly more discussion needs to take place in regards to a BOT. If we want to have somebody come in and talk about a BOT and answering questions, I'm happy to make some connections for the council to do that. With that, anything else for the board? I think we were at Joe. Joe, do you have any updates?
No, no, I'm just...I'm really confused. I feel like...I feel really confused. I just don't understand that process. I do, but I don't, if that makes any sense.
Would you like to go through it one more, like, quickly?
Yeah, let's do it, yeah.
That's fine. I have it actually written down from... Let me find that. So it might be an easier way to describe it. Okay. All right, so the first step in the process would be the commissioners adopt a BOT statute, which is just the... You have the information, but not the proposed ordinance yet. The second step would be an RFP or an RFQ for the project. The third step would be selection of a project team. So that would be, you know, finding the development team. The fourth step would be the scoping period. So that would be those design decisions that we were talking about. And at that point, you'll also get your guaranteed maximum price. There will also be a public hearing recommendation for you to formally enter into an agreement with that development team. And that will be a BOT agreement. So that'll be that next step. After there is a BOT agreement between the county and the development team, and that's typically done with the commissioners. So the commissioners will do a public hearing with the team to enter into a BOT agreement. with the team to enter into a VOT agreement, then the fiscal body would identify a repayment source. That's typically how it works, I don't believe the commissioners can do that without the council. And then that is the next, then the next step is allowing the developer to get financing, and then after that, there is an operating or lease agreement. And that, at that point, construction can begin. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. Rondell? Um, the only thing I'll add is, Rondell and I went to the district county council meeting, without these district meetings, with county council members, um, hosted by Indiana Association of County Councils, so that was interesting, they did a legislation, a legislative update, and they talked a lot about the governor's, um, Public Health Commission, which we had a presentation last, last council meeting about that. Um, it seems like there might be more strings attached to those funds than what was communicated in our council meeting, I think there has been some developments with the legislation, so that's something we'll need to keep our eyes on, it didn't seem as easy as we just sign up and we can use the money how we want, it seemed very specific, so we're gonna have to keep our eye on that legislation in particular, um, but it was really nice, Rondell and I were able to talk to, um, two Scott County council members and Floyd County council members, so it was good to see other people in our area, they also had recommended and really wanted to, um, spend more time getting to know their counterparts in other counties. I know commissioners do that a lot, where they go and have breakfast with other commissioners, and I think that would be really worthwhile for us to look at exploring the relationships with other county councils around, around us, and see what's going on, especially as we look towards potentially a VOT or any other sort of projects, it's good to figure out what lessons learned have happened around us. All right, with that, I will...
It was also nice to know that other counties had the same situations and problems, similar to ours, that it's just not this level since other counties.
Almost all of them expressed, um, concerns with the investment funding, and increased, you know, increase to the budget for emergency services. So those are all topics that'll also be talked about, I think, at the state meeting, which I believe is in June in Carmel, so we'll have more info on that, on that soon. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, I have the motion on the floor by Rondell, do I have a second? If I don't impress him, all those in favor, raise your right hand.